I'd like to call this public hearing to order. I need to announce that this is the, we're bound by charter to hold a public hearing on the preliminaries of the budget. This is the school committee budget. And so I'd like to call the school committee portion to order. We do have representation from the board of selectmen.
Another one.
Uh, I don't see anyone from the finance committee, but when we get a quorum, I'll, I'll turn it over to the board of selectmen and they can open their meeting.
Well, Mr. Chairman, we need a quorum for that. We don't have one yet, so we'll defer on opening the meeting until we have three members.
And I will wait until you have a quorum.
Great, thank you.
Okay. We welcome our town administrator, Mr. Sullivan. Thank you. We look forward to input from all parties present. I don't know if anyone from the finance committee will be here, but if they do, we'll also allow the finance committee, or no, encourage the finance committee to ask questions in terms of going out of here this evening with some clarity as to where Wareham Public Schools are going in terms of the FY16 budget. So with that being said, I'd like to lay out just a couple of ground rules. And we'll have the superintendent do a presentation on the budget. And then we'll open it, anytime I see a quorum, I will allow, respectfully request that the board of selectmen start their meeting or convene their meeting. But then the superintendent will continue. And upon completion of her presentation, I would ask the board of selectmen or the town administrator to ask any kind of questions or clarity or comments or whatever the case may be. It's kind of a open forum. And then I will also do the same for the finance committee if they, if they are here. Then I will open it up to the general public if they have any questions, concerns, to address them at that particular time. And then we'll finish up with the school committee making any comments or asking any questions that they may have in terms of coming to grips with what is presented here this evening. So with that being said, does anyone on the committee, did I miss anything? Very well. Madam Superintendent, you have the floor. Oh, incidentally, there is coffee for anyone, water up on stage. Please feel free to help yourself.
Good evening. Is this Lawrence Junior now? No.
Is it, is it the basement?
The base. Brother bass, new church.
I played the bass when I was in high school.
The bass.
Mr. Titlebaum, you now have a quorum, I believe. And you can make any statement at this time.
Uh, we'll let the clerk and the chair pro town handle that.
No, I think you guys can go right ahead.
Thank you. Yes.
I realize this may be somewhat unusual, but I also realize how difficult it is for people who work all day to make meetings. I will have my email open.
Test one, two, test one, two.
If, if a citizen wants to email me a question, I would be glad to give it to you as the chair and you can decide who you would like to answer the questions. Does that work for you?
That's fine.
Okay. And my email address is G. Sweat, S. W. E. T. T.
You're such a brave man.
At wareham.k12.ma.us.
You want to repeat that?
G. Sweat, S. W. E. T. T. at wareham.k12.ma.us.
Thank you. Or, or you can go to the website and look under the school committee and find it there. All these technocrats. Okay, so Madam Superintendent.
Thank you. Is it working?
Yes.
Oh, good. Good evening, members of the school committee, board of selectmen, town administrator, and the others here this evening. Welcome, and thank you for coming to our FY16 open budget hearing. The preparation of this budget was not completed in isolation. It's a collective work of our administrators and directors with input from teachers, staff, and school councils. I would like to thank all that have contributed and recognize the following. Our high school principal, Mr. Palladino. Our middle school principal, Mr. Minkle. Alternative school principal, Ms. Moore. Elementary principals, Mrs. Seaman and Mrs. Noonan. Director of Student Services, Dr. Marks, and with the assistance of Mr. Blake and Ms. Morgan. Director of Curriculum, Dr. Schwab. I would like to thank you, thank them for their contribution and collaboration during this process. I also extend my thanks to the superintendent budget subcommittee members, Mr. Michael Flaherty and Mr. Jeff Sweat, for their time and guidance during this process. And finally, my deepest appreciation is extended to our business manager, Mr. McMillan, for his time and attention to detail, for this allows us to present to you tonight a thoughtful and thorough budget for FY16. We recognize the need for innovation, and as we help our students achieve global proficiency within an ever-broadening society, we understand change is hard and it is very difficult. However, if we fail to explore and examine our programs, curricular offerings, and the professional development, then we impose self-limits for our students, which in turn may not offer them opportunities to grow and thrive in a global society. Responsibility is a two-way street. We as educators must be lifelong learners as we are responsible to provide quality education for all students. Our students have a responsibility and must be accountable as they approach their education and the opportunities we offer with a spirit of grit, rigor, and a desire to grow and to contribute to our district, our community, and to society. We have many amazing staff who deeply care about and are dedicated to our students. We also know our parents want the very best for their child. We realize that we must operate within a limited budget. However, it is and will be our mission to provide our students of Wareham with a quality and rigorous educational experience, thus preparing our students for their future. To approach approaching the FY16 budget, we ask some essential questions. These questions guided the budget formation. The questions are as followed. What are our guidelines for our budget decisions? What are our specific priorities? What are the budget drivers in the FY16 budget proposal? And finally, what are the revenue considerations and our needs as we drive the district forward? It's our belief that the Wareham Public School budget should support the goals for student achievement, as it is our obligation to put students first and to provide a rigorous academic offerings. We will support the four pillars of mathematics, literacy, technology, safe and supportive school environment. It's our responsibility to respect the fiscal priorities of the town by continuing to examine our programs. And as responsible stewards, we realize the importance of respecting the fiscal priorities of our towns and to work collaboratively with the town to combine services when possible and to continue to explore operational efficiencies. As we entered into the FY16 budget process, a joint meeting was held between our school committee and members of our administrative team. The outcome of this meeting included the acknowledgement of needing to meet special education compliance regulations. We also will continue to align the curriculum and strive to provide our students with rigorous offerings in an academically challenging environment. We will provide a supportive school environment for both students and staff. And finally, we need to develop and begin to address capital needs. The FY16 budget, which is presented this evening, was developed keeping in mind the priorities: contractual and regulatory requirements, maintaining reasonable class sizes, improving effectiveness of our expenditures on special education and alternative programs, providing relevant curriculum materials, professional development, and effective and transparent formative assessments; improving, expanding, and connecting our technology integration to curriculum and instruction, thus meeting student needs; and finally, focusing on capital needs within our buildings. The total budget, which I respectfully submit, is $27,842,986, which is a difference of $963,331 from the FY15 budget. And now I would ask Mr. McMillan to share some of the budget details.
Thank you, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This slide really just shows, just provides some context for our FY16 level service budget requirement, request. As you can see, there was a modest increase from 2010 right through until 2013, when actually the expenditure fell to the 2014 level before an actual level budget in 2015. So actually, as we move, this is, this was the first time since 2013 that we're actually, we're requesting an increase in our budget. What, of course, this doesn't show you is the impact of inflation over this time. So each year, as inflation, when inflation has increased, that has reduced the spending power of the money we do get. So what drives this increase in our budget? We've just boiled it down to these three key factors that drive the increase in our budget. The first is our employee contractual obligations. That is, the cost of living increases and step increases that we are contractually obliged to give to our employees. And that drives, that's $630,000, which obviously is a large chunk of that increase. Additionally, we are requesting as part of this budget, two full-time positions at the John W. DeKes Elementary School to reflect the increase in enrollment at grade two, while maintaining reasonable class sizes in line with the priorities set by the school committee. We're also looking to convert the part-time technical support position at the high school to full-time in light of the significant part technology plays in the delivery of the curriculum, the day-to-day schooling. It's necessary to us to have real-time on the, you know, on-the-ground support for teachers and staff and students as they're working with technology. Also, this budget seeks to turn another part-time position, an ELL teacher, from part-time to full-time. Again, we have, although still low, we have increasing numbers of English language learners amongst our student body. There's also increased requirements from the state legislator on how we support those students. And then finally, the last, the last sort of driver really is the increase in our out-of-district special education costs. So that is where students are placed in, in, out-of-district organizations to receive tuition. Then that tuition is charged back to the district. And when we've estimated the cost of that tuition next year, based on the students we know about now, plus an increase of around seven students who we know about, who are due to come onto our books next year, we see of an increase in around $292,000. We're also forecasting a 3% increase in the cost per student, as all those providers that are out of the district and providing tuition to those students, they, each year can increase their, their prices that they charge us. And so the overall impact of that is $365,000. So there, if you've been very quick, you might have noticed that this, this column here, the amount, actually adds up to more than the increase we're asking for. And that's because, at the same time as the changes we're making, we're also making savings and looking for ways to reduce our costs within the district. So this slide, just get mine, nifty pointer out. So this slide show, breaks down the budget, this level service budget request for FY16 down into the major accounts, a part of our chart of accounts. This is our primary, the major categories for our expenditure. So, and you know what, the increases you see here, so for example, classroom and specialist teachers, we're showing a significant increase, and that comes back to that major driver of the contractual, employee contractual salary obligations that we have. There's a, an increase in administration, and that's partly because an administrator's position was previously offset by a grant. That grant has been reallocated to a teacher, so that helps to offset teachers' costs, but it does show a slight increase in administration. There's also some, there are some areas where the total cost is going down. So if I can, so for example, in other teaching services, there's a slight decrease, as well as in guidance, counseling, and testing. And that's partly just as we're better reflecting expenditure from previous years, but also some reorganization of the special education department, who we replaced. We were spending money on contracted services, and we've replaced them by staff. That's helped to reduce our overall costs in those areas. Okay, so I'm going to hand over to Dr. Schwab, our director for curriculum and instruction, and she's going to take you through some of the curriculum, instruction, and assessment projects we have planned as part of this budget.
Some of the mentioned, there are quite a few curriculum initiatives mentioned. Some are from building principles, and I'm just going to actually highlight four of those areas that are changing. We are currently piloting a math program that we may begin implementing. This program is technologically integrated, connected to the Massachusetts standards, will remove the need to purchase consumables, and has received positive feedback from the teachers and students engaged in the pilot. Facing History and Ourselves is a worldwide organization that enables transformative dialogue, fosters empathy and reflection, and improves students' academic performance. Through rigorous investigation of historical events that led to the Holocaust and other recent examples of genocide and mass violence, students in Facing History class learn to choose knowledge over misinformation, compassion over prejudice or bullying, and participate, and participation over indifference or resignation. It's active rather than passive learning. Marzano's Essentials for Teaching Rigor will provide teachers with necessary tools to enhance inquiry-based strategies fostering deeper thinking. Teachers will learn how to use criteria for success to identify critical content as students process, elaborate, record, and represent their knowledge. Many of the Wareham Public School teachers are highly educated and experts in their field. It would be beneficial for those teachers to begin developing coursework that colleagues can attend for the purpose of professional development. This support provides sustainable, impactful professional development for teachers. It also saves money. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to be clear, so we've included this sort of information here to really give you a flavor of the, of how the budget is being used to help to support the curriculum and other priorities of the district. So we've also included some of the, well, the maintenance projects we have planned. As you can see, I mean, these are, these are not the biggest projects that are trying to replace carpets at DeKes, and this is just be partial, beginning that part of a multi-year project to replace some carpets, and also adding additional security cameras, and this is external cameras at Minnet. Of course, what this doesn't show you is the unforeseen expenditure that comes around from repairs or ongoing maintenance that has to happen to our buildings. You know, if a boiler breaks down, or there's a hole in the roof, those things have to happen too, and there is money in the budget for that, and they're not identified here. So as you, if you're familiar with the budget, our budget, you'll know that our staffing costs are almost 80% of all of our budget. So that is, so we've got a couple of slides just to go over that, because that is the biggest part of our budget, and also we have a couple of changes planned there. So this, just to give you an idea of where our staff, you know, the, how our staff are categorized, obviously, and unsurprisingly, the largest chunk of our teacher, our staffing, our teachers. There are also instructional support, which is this, oh, actually, I can, so instructional support, which is this orange segment here, that's the paraprofessionals in the classroom helping teachers, dealing with students, obviously, special education and student services. That includes things like nurses and guidance. So these are all people who are providing direct services to students. Obviously, we have a technology team and a, the administration. So just to recap, the, some of the changes we've seen over the last year or so, we had cut 34 positions, which we equated to around, to 30.5 FTE at the end of, sorry, last, end of FY14 into FY15. Since then, we have made some changes. So I alluded to earlier the restructuring of some of our sped services. So we took, we stopped contracting for certain services and replaced them by staff, and that helped us to save money overall. We also, due to the high enrollment at John W. DeKes Elementary School, we added a couple of positions, a full-time kindergarten teacher and a part-time paraprofessional. We also added a STEAM teacher to provide, in order as, to meet our contractual obligations to provide planning time to our teachers, an adjustment counselor, a technology assistant district-wide, and a custodian for one of our existing buildings. And so the net effect of that, I've not included these, these sped FTE positions because obviously they offset some contractual costs. But so the, the net effect of those changes was 28 positions reduced. Obviously, if you include sped, it's 24. Either way, you're talking, yeah, a big decrease in the number of staffing in the district.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure that this, because even though it says staffing changes FY15, these are changes that have already been made.
Yes.
Not changes that are being proposed going into, I just, it's important to say that again.
Yes.
So then they don't see this as, this is what's proposed for next year's budget. These changes have already been made in what we're living with right now.
Okay, yes, thank you. So these are the staffing changes that have already happened. So this is kind of getting us to where we are now. So these staffing changes are reflected in this pie chart, and this is what we are planning. So this has already happened. So just to provide again some historical context, so where, you know, the trend and the number of staff we have in the district. So every year, we have to report staffing information to the state. Now, it's not on all staffing, so it's only a partial picture of where we are, because it doesn't include custodians, or a food service workers, or transportation, but it includes almost everybody else. And what you can see, I mean, I'll just look at the total, so since 2011, when we reached a high of 395, each year since then has, has come down in the number of staff we have, down to 350. This is in FTEs, which is why you have these decimal points. So you've seen a reduction year on year, and as we go into 2015, and I think the superintendent's going to come up and give you a view on the positions we'd like, we have included in this budget.
Staffing proposed changes for FY16 budget includes, there'll be two teaching positions reduced. We believe this will be done through attrition. Increase of ELL, due to the ELL population by a .25. They're currently a .75, and this would increase them to full-time. It would, we would also propose increasing the technology support at the high school to a, from a .5 to a full-time FTE, and this would be a paraprofessional. And then looking at our enrollment trends, we have a second grade class that we feel we need to hire a second grade teacher and a specialist. This would be due to increased enrollment and as well as contractual obligations. As you realize, the large, one of the large areas of our budget increase is out-of-district tuition. This isn't isolated to Wareham. This is schools across the Commonwealth as well as across the nation. However, we understand that it's our obligation to review the various programs to ensure that we're meeting the needs of our students, and if we can provide services in district, then we're prepared to provide the services our students need to keep them in district instead of sending them out. And what this chart shows is, over time, the increase. So if you'll see, Michael, where's your pointer? 2014, and then we jump to 2015. And again, when you look at the bottom chart, the number of students receiving out-of-district tuition, in 2014, there's 28, and in 2015, there's 37.
What was the number for 16?
Pardon?
Do you have a number for 16?
Our discussion continues to focus on cost-saving measures. We're working to improve the delivery of services to our students in an efficient and effective manner. We're examining our processes, we're examining our programs, and we'll seek to improve how we can deliver services not only for special education students, but also regular education students. So what you see here is, the first bullet is the regular ed student population. And then as it narrows, it goes into the special ed and then the out-of-district. What we've implemented this year is a FAST assessment. And what the FAST assessment is, it's a, a format- And what the FAST assessment is, it's a formative assessment that's delivered several times throughout the year, and it provides real-time information, real-time data for our teachers, and so they have that available to work with students immediately. We haven't had that in the past. We feel like that certainly provides us with a better playing field to work with our students. We just, we're just getting ready to start our second round. We started it, and we'll have the information to see what kind of growth we have seen in our students from round one to round two, and if what we're doing is improving. And again, the areas being investigated, we know we need to provide support for our students both academically and emotionally, and we're looking at the programs that we currently have and how that supports our students. Again, we're, we continue to look and examine our practices, and how can we deliver services that are effective and meet the needs of our students. We understand that our students are entering into a global society, and we need to address technology and how technologies, technology is integrated into the curriculum. Again, we just continue to review and review and review. The piece that I would like to share with you tonight is, on Friday, we were notified that we received the Academic Academy Planning Grant, and we were one of three school districts in the state that received this grant. What this grant will do will allow us X number of dollars to sit and plan for a high school academy, and we're calling it our Innovators and Entrepreneurs. And we believe this will meet the needs of some of our students that we've not been able to meet. We also believe this will keep our students in Wareham instead of school choicing out. And I have to tell you, we're quite excited about this possibility, and we believe this will support our students to remain in Wareham, and to provide them with a quality education. We deeply appreciate the willingness of the town of Wareham to support the funding of the High School Roof Project. This project is in the final stages, and we're happy to say it's coming in under budget. Unfortunately, the needs of our buildings continue to surface, and we will be seeking approval from the school committee, and then we'll be going to the Board of Selectmen to submit an MSB proposal to replace the E Corridor roof at Deacon's. This roof is leaking, it's in major disrepair, and we certainly do need to replace it. Other projects which have been identified are listed. For example, Deacon's, we know we would like to replace the intercom system as well as the fire alarm panel. At Minnet, we would like to replace asbestos tile and address the boiler and heater system. The boiler and heater system at Deacon's is also getting ready to come on to this capital priority list as we need to address our buildings. You know, and as we reflect on the educational priorities of the Wareham Public Schools, this budget represents what we believe will improve student achievement, and to provide a focus on math, literacy, technology, safe and supportive schools. Again, I appreciate your attendance this evening. I thank all of you for working collaboratively with us, but more importantly, I appreciate you caring about our students and putting our students first. So at this time, I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Also, for the folks at home, our budget documents have been placed on the website. If you would like a hard copy, if you would come to our office, we would be very happy to have a hard copy provided to you. Tonight, we have a budget packet that you've received, and in the back, it has our line item cost. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
At this time, I'd like to ask the town administrator or the Board of Selectmen if they have any questions or comments or statements at this particular time. I would also, for the record, indicate that the entire Board of Selectmen is present for this meeting. We welcome, welcome you all. So at this particular time, Mr. Slaven or Mr. Sullivan, you have the floor.
We can, but I don't know if it's going to be legitimate. Can we slide down?
Yeah, when he asks me, I'll go ahead.
Yeah.
I really can't slide too much.
I'm going to move on either side, so a couple of us can move over to the other side.
Yeah, I can move to the other side.
Judy, Allen? We can move down.
It's fine.
Fire broke?
Yeah.
Let's just get comfortable, too.
Mr. Sullivan at this time is, basically, has no comment. I will ask the board.
Comments or questions?
Mr. Holmes?
Just for the record to identify.
Real quickly, without having not reviewed the packet, I did want to commend the superintendent for your hard work and your team's hard work. And, you know, I've said before that I thought maybe we'd get through an easier year this year now that you've been here for a little while, and Mr. Sullivan has been here for a little while. You're both, in my opinion, doing an excellent job, and, you know, hopefully that we, over the next several weeks, we can come together and make all this fit for the town and for the school districts. So thank you and all of your team. I think you did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Tropiano.
I really don't have much to say yet. There's a lot to digest here yet. Before I can really make any comments at this point, I have to work with the budget a little bit, and then I'll have questions probably later.
Mr. Tidlebaum.
First off, I'd like to thank the superintendent and Michael for providing the numbers in such a clear and easy-to-read format. This is something I'm not used to seeing. A couple of numbers jump out at me. I don't really know what to make of them, but, but they do, they do sort of stick out amongst others. First is the fiscal year fifteen budget was predicated upon a student enrollment of twenty-six sixty-four. The fiscal year sixteen is predicated upon a projected enrollment of twenty-five fifty-eight. That's a decline in about, of about a hundred and six students, and represents about a four percent drop in the school population. Obviously, this factors into what the superintendent was talking about regarding the out-of-district students that we're paying for. That impacts the budget number, that impacts the enrollment numbers. To the extent that there's an ability to intervene and at least roll the tide back a little bit here, that would be a wonderful thing. Would be great to be able to keep our money to educate our students in our town. Another number that jumps out at me a bit is the in-kind. An increase of about seventeen and a half percent, if I managed to fiddle around with the calculator on my cellphone correctly, which is no guarantees I did. Of that number, is there somebody who can explain to me what the percentage is of healthcare insurance costs and what the other costs associated with the in-kind are?
Unfortunately, I can't give you the exact percentages.
Oh, no, just ballpark's fine, fine for me at this point.
I can just tell you that the, the increase is, I think it'd be fair to say would make, the increase is driven by the increase in healthcare.
Right.
I mean, I think I'm looking at town administration, I think it's probably, the increase is probably in the region of seventy to eighty percent is coming from healthcare. And I mean, there are, there is also increases in workers' compensation, and those are the two sort of biggest areas that I think are increasing. The rest of the in-kind is, well, a lot of the in-kind is when services the town provide to us, such as technical support, the time of the town administrator, the accountant, financial support. So we get that in-kind support. But really, then the big increase and the big challenge for us is healthcare.
Thank you for that explanation, and thank you for that listing of what the, what some of the various types of in-kind support from the town are. But those are questions that I frequently get, and I'm not in a position to answer I think that's really all I had at this time. Obviously, our big budget day is the Selectmen's meeting after the twenty-fifth to the twenty-seventh, when we will see Mr. Sullivan's budget, we'll see this budget integrated in that, and then we'll go forward. I will note that I'm not quite sure where the additional nine-hundred-some-thousand dollars will come from, but I wasn't sure last year or the year before either, so nothing has really changed sitting here.
Mrs. Whiteside.
Thank you. I happened to hear the budget presentation on the day that the school spent a whole day doing the presentations, and I apologize for being late tonight, but Mr. Slaven and I had another appointment. I do not have a copy of the presentation for tonight. I can tell you that my original comment was, you were asked for a level funding budget, not a level service budget. And I would, I discussed that comment with Mr. Sullivan as well as Mr. Slaven. There's a difference between level funding and level service. Again, I appreciate the fact that there is a very large amount of information here, and I would be a fool to try and comment on it without having time to look at it. Speed reader, I am, not that fast.
Thank you. What we have in front of us unfortunately is something that would basically have, we've seen right now. There's no way for anyone to sit there and look at a document as it's sitting at a table and make any kind of legitimate comment or anything, because you have to delve in. This is a full line item budget, not the actual, what we had at town meeting, where you have a single number, and that's what you vote on. Someday in the future, even though the state doesn't allow for it, it would be nice to have a line item budget like the town has. There are a bunch of issues that we've been discussing over the last couple of years as far as consolidating, as far as streamlining services, transportation, et cetera. I haven't seen any actual decision of these things being done. As we discuss the budget going forward, come up with a balanced budget, which is the town and the school department, it's really the town, and just all the different departments, the school department is just one piece, but it's not the town versus the school. And I hope never hear or see that ever again being discussed that way. We will have to make adjustments and figure out how we make it work, because at the end of the day, we're going to have to have a balanced budget. We're going to have to work within our means, and unfortunately, we're going to have to look at student enrollment and figure out where we're going, because the direction is really bad. It's as simple as that. But we're not the only ones. Bourne has issues, and the Cape, I think it's Dennis Yarmouth having severe problems. Thankfully, we don't have Sturgis, which is going to have two schools now that can draw seven-hundred-and-forty students out of the system. The state seems to be favoring a little bit more of the charter schools, which makes it very hard. Town of Wareham maybe have to look at regionalization down the line with maybe Bourne or somebody. You know, moving schools from one piece to the other to make it effective. There's a lot of things on the table we're going to have to start discussing. We can't sit and close our eyes and hope it goes away. It's not going away, so as we're constituted today, we won't be constituted five years from now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slaven. Anyone else from the Board of Selectmen at this time?
You got us all. You got them all.
We got them all, okay. At this time, I'd like to ask if anyone in the audience would like to address the committee. Maybe you could come up here and use this last, there was a microphone up there?
Mm-hmm.
Right here, there it is. Just identify yourself and state your case. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I wrote something, because I'm a very passionate person, and I don't do well staying on topic when I'm being passionate, so. All right, so, good evening. I'm here as an eight-year resident of Wareham.
State your name, please.
My name is Heather Hogan.
Welcome, Heather.
Thank you. I'm a parent of three Wareham Public School students. I am here tonight to specifically, to specifically address some concerns I had after watching the all-day budget workshop on December eighteenth. Thank you. All right, just out. Is that better? Okay, that's much, thank you. In spite of my frustrations, I am trying to keep in mind that our worlds are limited to our own perspectives. You guys are number guys, and I'm a people, a people guy, so I'd like to start off by saying thank you to Mrs. Minklemore. I do not have a student at her school, but I watched as she was questioned about her programming during that committee meeting. She does a great job engaging her students, and she provides a great amount of advocacy among the parents and students in her building. I have sat through many school committee meetings where I watched other principals being drilled on their programming for regular ed students and their accelerated students. And in all that time, I've heard programs scrutinized, but I've never actually heard whether the students receiving that program were worthy of that program. A student's values should never be put into question. Whether it's a gifted student, an average student, or a student who receives special education, there is no one group that is entitled to an education more than another. See, this is where my passion comes in. Every child in Wareham deserves to have the necessary resources, given them to learn in whatever way that child makes progress. During the meeting on the eighteenth, a school committee member asked why students end up at the Wareham Partnership rather than high school and middle school. Is it behavior? I'd like to share a personal experience about classroom behavior. I was a teacher myself, and I also have volunteered in three different school districts many, many hours. This particular event happened in an elementary classroom. The class was engaged in a reading lesson. Several students were struggling to keep up, but still trying to engage in the lesson. One particular student, whose reading level was four grade levels behind her peers, raised her hand with a question to the teacher. She was told that she should find something else to do if she couldn't follow along. The child had been so excited about the lesson. She had her personal knowledge, her own personal knowledge to share, and she was turned away from participating. She then proceeded to, in tears, sit under a nearby table. The teacher came over to draw her out by saying, "Come back to your seat. You need to stop acting like a baby. Do you see any of your friends acting like a baby?" Later that day, when the child was out for recess, I was out with the classroom. Her peers taunted her and called her a baby. Her behavior was not looked at as acceptable behavior. By the way, this is not my child, this was another student in the classroom, just so you know. If you, if you were a child being denied participation in a classroom activity because you lacked the same skills as your peers, would you not have had a behavior yourself? Behavior is communication. Behavior says the things that we are not able to put into words, or do not feel safe putting into words. If our school system is full of behavior problems, I would look at the reasons for the behaviors. What are the kids of Wareham trying to communicate to us? I would say that our teachers lack support and resources. Our teachers are human beings who send emails on Sundays and Friday nights at ten, and are invested and care about our kids. The teacher is a human being in a classroom of twenty-four kids, where fourteen kids have IAPs and two have 504s, and it is not humanly possible to differentiate instruction for twenty-four students without support and resources. I know that teacher was doing the best job they could with the knowledge and resources they have. They were not especially. They were not a special education teacher, they were a regular education teacher. I'd like to also address another question that was posed shortly after that question and that was, "Do your students end up in your program, Mrs. Minkelman Moore, because of parenting or lack thereof?" In my professional position, I have read the educational files of six-hundred-and-seventeen students across southeast Massachusetts. Ten percent of those educational files I read were from Wareham. That's sixty-one families. I am a parent of three children with special education. As parents, we love our children. Parents of children in special education volunteer in your schools, in your communities as coaches and they participate in our community. These parents are doctors, teachers, nurses, policemen, people with their own disabilities, homeless, unemployed, wealthy, and the list is varied. They spend their after-school hours sitting in waiting rooms for therapies, paying co-pays, providing expensive, expensive educational and social opportunities to help their kids get on level playing fields at school. All the while, trying to give their children the experience of playing sports, dancing, scouts, or anything else that their typical peers are doing. Please widen your perspective about who the parents of kids with special needs are. I would also like to point, under thirty-four CFR, which is Quote of Federal Regulations, thirty-point-three-four, section C, eight, a parent is afforded parent counseling and training through the public schools. If you feel that a parent needs to have a better understanding of their child's special needs or to be taught the skills to better support their children's education, it can be written into an IEP and the school is required to provide that training to that parent. I'd also like to just address really quickly some misinformation that was provided at the committee at that workshop. I appreciate, um, throughout the meeting, Dr. Shaverhood really did address some of the, the concerns about why, um, kids in the middle school were so far behind and, you know, the elementary schools didn't have the proper interventions and that she was gonna be putting interventionists in the elementary schools so that eventually the middle schools wouldn't need those interventionists. And I think that, that is a great plan, but there were a couple of things that I wanted to clear up. A 504 is a document of accommodations formulated by a team to help that student access the curriculum. A 504 can go with a student onto college or a job if it's needed. IEPs are made not only of accommodations, but also services. IEPs are focused on building an individual student's skills where they have an area of weakness to help them better access the curriculum. Like Dr. Shaverhood explained, the curriculum can be modified by an IEP. IEPs are driven by evaluations that identify a student's area of strength and weakness. Evaluators then give recommendations for that individual student. So, for people who don't understand special education, it's like you go to a doctor and you give them your symptoms and they give you a prescription. Then you go to CVS and get a, you know, your prescription filled, they give you antibiotics. Evaluations are like a prescription that the school has to fill. At the meeting, it was stated that children likely never come off IEPs. I would like to disagree with that statement. When a child is given the intensive supports they require by law, I have seen many children graduate from their IEPs. In districts across southeast Massachusetts, I have seen ten percent of the students I have worked with successfully gain the skills they need to access the curriculum without the support of an IEP. I'm almost done. I would also like to address the statement that gifted students do not receive a special education. While it is true that IEPs are not written specifically to address giftedness, gifted students can have a disability. They are called twice exceptional. A child is considered mildly gifted at an IQ of one-fifteen. All three of my children have an IQ over one-fifteen. They are gifted students who have an IEP. Two of my kids scored advanced on their MCAS and one scored two points away. So, not every child with a disability looks like they have a disability. I know that this is common because of the files that I read and due to the fact that I work with a specific disability, seventy-five percent of the children I work with have an IQ of a hundred or more. Finally, IEP teams are driven by student individual needs. By law, a budget does not dictate what services and support a student needs. The team that has knowledge of the individual student makes that determination and that is covered under thirty-four CFR, one-oh-four-point-three-three, section 504, and twenty-eight CFR, thirty-five, one-one-three-three-zero relating to the American Disabilities Act. And if you have any question and need further clarity, you can reference the court ruling on Washington State School for the DEF-22-IDELR-987. That is why our budgets are so big because this is an entitlement for these students. They are required by law to have their needs met. So, our worlds are limited by our own perspectives. My perspective widens every time I attend a school committee meeting and hear the numbers game. I hope with the information I have shared tonight, I have been able to widen your perspective about a large group that you have to serve within your school committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anyone else that would like to address the committee?
Dr. Sullivan?
Yes. Rose, could you identify yourself?
Yes.
For the record.
My name is Deborah Rose. I'm on the school council at Mine at Forest and I'm a volunteer at Mine at Forest and have been for over thirteen years and my mother preceded me as a volunteer at Mine at Forest School. First thing I wanna say is I couldn't follow what I grabbed when I came in until I got some help from my principal, Mrs. Siemens. The first things that were used were at the back of my package, but hers was a separate package, I believe. That's an, that's something I wanted to bring up. And I'm curious, uh, I'm, as some of you know, I worked for USDA for many years. Is all this special education issues because of the No Child Left Behind Act? Or is it related to that?
No.
It isn't?
No.
The Disabilities Act.
Okay, I just wanted that clarified because I, when we were working with the school lunch program on, the No Child Left Behind meant we had to provide some special regulations for children that had eating issues.
I'm not familiar with that. Is everyone familiar with that?
No. No.
Okay, but I just wanted to stress that, you know, this was useless to me when I first got here until Mrs. Siemens, who helps me all the time when I have issues, helped me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rose. Is there anyone else that would like to address the school committee at this time? Then I'll conclude the, the meeting by asking anyone on the school committee that needs to make a comment or needs clarification. Mr. Flaherty?
I think it was, um, so one of the selectmen, I mentioned, I forget who it was, I just wanna be clear, maybe it was Ms. Whiteside, that the town had asked for a, a level service, a level, a level funded budget from us, correct? Is that true? I guess, uh, to Mr. Sullivan?
I don't understand.
We're, we're showing today a level service budget and according to Mrs. Whiteside, you had requested a level funded budget.
I think the Board of Selectmen had requested that we do that.
All right, so, so that request was made?
It would be, be my understanding, if that's what they've, if that's what they've said, Mr. Flaherty.
To the chair.
If you're asking me to contradict that, I will not.
No, I'm not. I'm, just want to know what, what the answer is. I guess to the, to the chair of the, the selectmen, where, where we asked for a level funded budget.
Mrs. Whiteside is our representative to the school committee and, uh, probably that would have come from that discussion there. That's in her purview.
Maybe, I, I just asked, I asked at the la, our last meeting and I was told that no, we weren't, so I just wanna be clear, we're, was there an email or anything sent to us asking for a level funded budget?
Not from the board directly.
So, so, so no? Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Mrs. Feugan?
I just wanna thank the, the, um, parents and the volunteers that spoke up today. Again, the, uh, the individuals that continue to, in, in this community that continue to stand up and fight for this school system, um, I just think is very important and I hope to see more parents being able to be part of this process. Though, just one piece that I just wanted to mention that had to do, that was mentioned earlier today, um, and I said it at a school committee, had to do with the FAST assessment. The FAST assessment is an important tool in our district, not only for our schools to be able to take a look of, uh, how our students are doing, but it is also something that's sent home to every single parent. The FAST data is actually something that we can use at home as parents to be able to take a look at where our child, um, is doing in the school system and it actually points out pieces where there might be struggling a little bit. I found it very, very useful and I like to say it at every single meeting that when that data comes home, as a parent, take a look at it, really dive in and it's a blueprint, um, or the start of a conversation that you can step, start having with your teacher on some places where they're struggling. So, I appreciate you allowing me to say that tonight.
Anyone else, uh, from the school committee that has a comment or a question? Well, I'd like to, uh, take the opportunity to thank everyone for coming and I'd like to, uh, to thank all of the staff, regardless of your role, for your contributions to Wareham Public School. And, uh, hopefully, uh, we can work together and to make this budget work. I, I'm the senior member on the committee and I, I truly believe that, uh, we have always operated on what we thought was in the best interest of the students. Now, we may not always agree on what that is, but I think that was the premise of everyone on the committee. And I, I, I'm not speaking for anyone on the committee, only myself, but, for myself and I, I think my colleagues would, would agree, that our main focus is to providing the best possible educational opportunities for our children that we possibly can without, um, without dismantling our system. So, I think it's important that a happy meeting be, be met and I look forward, um, to any other discussions or questions that may arise, either from the FINCOM or the Board of Selectmen or from the general public, uh, relative to this budget. Again, I'd like to remind everyone that there is a breakfast at ten o'clock for Martin Luther King at the Boys and Girls Club. That's a pretty good, nine o'clock? Wrong, nine o'clock. Uh, it's my old age kicking in. And would like to see everyone, everyone there. You want the last word, Mr. Swett? Go ahead.
Doesn't need to be the last word.
Go ahead.
But I just wanted to acknowledge that this document, as wonderful as it is, is a lot to digest. We will be meeting two weeks from tonight to actually vote on this document. Before doing so, there will be a public participation. So, if after digesting this, you've got questions at that time, that's a great time to be there to ask us as part of public participation two weeks from tonight.
You must, you must be reading my mind.
Thank you, though. And that is true. We will be voting on this in two weeks. So, look it over, discuss it, talk about it, uh, get ahold of any one of us or the school, or the superintendent, uh, our business manager, or anyone you need to talk to in terms of getting clarity so that, uh, when we do have that, uh, voting, uh, meeting, that, uh, you can participate in public participation and ask deliberate questions. So, if there is nothing further to be said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn from the school committee. I have a motion?
Second.
I have a second. The school, school, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Board of Selectmen, you can do the same.
I need a motion to adjourn, please. Second?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you for coming, ladies and gentlemen. We are adjourned.